About a minute early. Okay, welcome to January twenty twenty-three. Council meeting. Want to say I'm your man Steve Harvey. I watch better TV than you. But I didn't say I'm your man, Terry.
I can't go to bed.
Did everybody have a good day? It's seventy-two degrees in January. Not bad. Good reason to move Prescott Arkansas. Hope everyone had a great holiday. Three-day weekend. We have lots of business to take care of tonight. So let me know if you need a rest for a break or an opportunity to stretch your legs, refocus. Thanks for your attendance, City Council. Especially your hard work the last three months. It's been real stressful. And I've done a good job handling all this best. Our citizens appreciate it. And our City of Prescott employees appreciate your efforts. Twenty-twenty-two. We'd also like to thank Brother Carl down in Rebel County for the extra work for the city in the last three months. It's been a lot done. Okay, we're gonna stand and Brother Curry. We'll leave him for a while, then we'll do the pledge of allegiance, then we'll come back. Not Mr. Curry.
Turn around. We come this afternoon to say thank you so much for allowing us to be here gathering to take care of your business. We pray that we can enter into this meeting with fellowship, end-in-fellowship. And we pray that we come up with ideals to get solutions to many of us's problems. We ask your blessings upon the brother Barry Barber family. We pray for President Hicks. And we ask healing in the young man's body. Father, we thank you for this opportunity on this day. And Jesus said in the prayer, "Thank God."
Amen. Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every virtue and justice for all. All right. And Mr. Austin. I just see where you want to give picture at this.
Okay, where you wanna?
I see where John wants to get picture at.
Here's good.
Where can I?
Hang on.
You got it for her.
That's good for me.
Everyone else has this one in? There you go. Okay, y'all raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Arkansas that you will faithfully discharge the duties of City Council for the City of Prescott, Arkansas?
I do.
All right, get in. So we're all sworn in. All right. Okay, we have a copy of the minutes. Everybody got a copy of the minutes of the December meeting? Any discussion on those? We need your approval on those.
Mr. Mayor, Patricia Roberts. You moved the December twenty-two grand meeting.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we got motion. We'll call Curry.
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Amy? Hicks?
Yes.
Okay, everyone should have a copy of the December financials. That's your end-of-the-year twelve-month totals there.
We are having a little bit. We accept the December two thousand twenty-two financial reports presented.
Second.
Okay, we got first and second. We'll call Curry. Yes. Roberts?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Okay, on tonight's reports. We got a couple of absences. So well, all three are absent, but I'm gonna do Janey's. In February, under the upcoming chamber of community events, six things going on. Six things going on in February. Real busy chamber month. Also, if you're trying to pay debt for that, you'll see we have new business opening. First business in Dragon Z MMA School. Offering classes in cardio kickboxing, cardio boxing, strength and conditioning coming up. Adult and children's mixed martial arts and kickboxing. For more information, call Michael. His phone number is eight-seven-zero-four-three-three-one-four-four-five. This will be business. Also, now is the time to start your nomination letter for twenty twenty-three Citizen of the Year in the chamber. Also, the twenty twenty-three Hometown Hero. Hometown Hero is for somebody that must be a resident of Bay County, must have reflected our country in the vision of the military, or currently works for a fire, police, or ambulance rescue unit in the Bay County. So get your nominations in to Janey on that. Anybody got any questions about the chamber report? Okay. All right, tonight, we have Mr. Blake Rogers with us. He's from Turner, Rogers, Manning, and Flahler. They're located in Arkadia and also now Badonia. So you should have a copy. This will be your twenty-twenty-one audit. You should have a copy of Blake's here to talk about it. If there's any questions you have. We've got Blake's with us tonight.
Y'all mind if I sit or don't you stand? Keep in mind I'm a public speaker, so. Not a lord, that's what. Excuse me. Can't hear me, let me know if you have any questions. In the back of the [inaudible 00:01:37]. There's a couple of [inaudible 00:01:41]. It's in there in white in the very front. It's gonna be kind of your guide to the report. And that's what I'm gonna go over. Just kind of let you know what the rest of these papers are. So pages one through three is your actual audit report. City receives an unqualified opinion for the two thousand twenty-one annual audit. Unqualified means that we as auditors did not note any material statements on financial statements or any significant areas concerning. So it's a good report. Pages four through nine is the management's discussion and analysis. The MDNA is a summary of what is found on pages ten through twenty-three, which is the city's financial statements. Now, this financial highlights is found on page four. Cities have assets on page six. Cities changes in net assets, net income or loss on page seven. Capital assets and debt administration on page eight. So now the pages ten through twenty-three, which are your basic financial statements. The government-wide financial statements, government and proprietary combined, which is utility department, proprietary utility department, on pages ten through twelve. Financial statements for government funds only on pages thirteen through seventeen. Financial statements of fiduciary net assets and statements of net changes in net assets on pages twenty-two and three. All are summarized in the MDNA section on pages four through nine. In these financial statements, we show that the citywide changes in net assets equal a decrease of one million seven hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars. Proprietary fund, utility department, shows a net loss of seven hundred sixty-three thousand dollars before transfers to general fund. So if you add a transfer to the general, it goes up. And then an increase of proprietary fund cash and cash equivalents to utility department is five hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars. So the cash account's going up five hundred seventy-seven thousand for utility department. On pages twenty-four through thirty-eight, that's your notes to the financial statements. Note one and two are basic accounting policies of the city. Note three is a detail on specific assets and liabilities. Note includes details on disposable risk, which would mean your bank accounts, whether they were underinsured, didn't have FDIC insurance, types of receivables, asset additions, delinquents, long-term debt, current payments. By the way, everything is covered. Everything's got it covered by FDIC on a budget level. Note four is other information, including details on risk management, major customers, suppliers, joint enters, employer retirement systems, and mutual plans. Note five is such sort of a guess. That's a single note. And it basically refers to the SWPCO issue that we had with the law. Note six is Arkansas Public Employee Retirement System. Majority of this information comes from the papers itself. It's not something that can be accumulated as accumulated letters. So pages thirty-nine through forty is the independent audit report on internal control, financial reporting, and on compliance and other matters based on the audit financial statements. The court has to go with audit standards. Purpose of this report is to describe the scope of our testing of internal control, compliance, and the results of that testing. And not to provide a opinion on the effectiveness of the city's internal control and compliance. Due to so, we noted no significant material weaknesses in internal control compliance. But we did note some deficiencies. It says, "See management letter." It's a loose piece. We can't go over that later. Page forty-one, intended to do an accounting report on compliance with our [inaudible 00:01:58]. We noted no instances of non-compliance with our [inaudible 00:02:01]. Supplemental information starts on page forty-two. There's the schedule of findings and question costs. Page ninety-nine. Page forty-three through forty-five is your budget, the actual comparison for your general fund, your street fund, utility department. Page forty-six requires supplemental information on cost sharing impacts. Like I mentioned before, it's information obtained from January thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. And then the first, in the back, there's two, two letters on break. That are loose. The first one is the management. And you'll see down, about halfway down, it says, "General Fund," our audit funding. We know the following areas of the utility department should be addressed. Utility system. By the way, this note's been in here every year, every business that I've been there. I've worked on this job since I was here, so been there for a while. Utility systems, couches, sleep, will include his couch, sofa, three hundred twenty-five thousand plus. There were interiors greater than a hundred twenty-one days. Although the city has a headoff policy in place, it does not appear that it has always appeared to. As of December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-one, there were no active accounts that were arrears of a hundred twenty-one days. So all these accounts are no longer active. Most of them have been off for years. I would say the last five years, this number has gone down. Some of them are solely elected. But some of them are just still sitting there. So anyway, that's the first one. Then, counts aren't as final in any other accounts deemed to be uncollectible. Should be very common that it is. Number two, we noted in all the funds, instances of invoices not being approved by authorized personnel prior to any date. Rare, we've seen it often. Rare times. Then, number three. This is in every audit we do. Due to the size of the city, we don't have awful internal controls. It just can't be done with another employees. And number four, which is on the next page. We know the following area of district court which should be addressed. Same thing, lack of service. Then that's [inaudible 00:02:38]. That was pretty quick.
More than one question? Or discussion?
Thank God, I'm going to, but if not, it was SWPCO issue. It was actually a pretty good year. And we did, we did record the amount that was packed in the SWPCO this November third. So it is in this, it's in this paper.
Hey, Oliver, I move that we accept the approval of the twenty-twenty-one audit.
Patricia Roberts, second.
Name of the Curry?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Hicks? Austin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
One last thing. Anybody have any questions? If they go home reading on this, this page, and a lot of these pages are on the [inaudible 00:03:01].
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Now, we will make a motion to introduce the first ordinance of twenty twenty-three. You want us? By name and number? You want us to discuss a little bit? I'd rather not, but I'd rather do yours, but. Okay. Been working on the budget the last three months. We've been concentrating on where to cut and what to do. And you'll see if you have the ordinance that John is ready to get over with tonight. This ordinance right here is about the trash hour. Because we no longer, our trash hour is no longer economically feasible. Everything has went up almost the last year, year and a half. We tried to hold off as long as we could without going up. We do not want to go up on our businesses. They're gonna stay at twenty-two. But on our citizens that have water meters, we want to go from ten fifty to a hundred fifteen dollars. Now, in the last six months, we have checked with several cities around here. We'll still be cheaper than most of them. So this fifteen dollars, this four dollar fifty cent increase will produce fifty-six thousand one hundred fifty dollars estimated at the end of the year. And our total budget is like, what, sixty-five?
Fifty-five.
So.
That, that increase is built into the budget.
Yes. So that's what we got. And we've studied this since October. We just can't figure out any other way to do this, or we wouldn't do it. So that's what we're putting at you tonight. It would be ordinance number one of twenty twenty-three.
Hold on a minute.
It would be ordinance number one.
It's already on there.
It would be a ending. It started nineteen ninety-two, then two thousand eleven, then two thousand fifteen. So it could be a meeting in two thousand fifteen.
Mayor, when I was asking you a few minutes ago, some amount of sales tax. It would be [inaudible 00:03:59]. Arkansas and the citizens to see what you want to do, what you're ever doing.
That's a good idea. We're going to talk later on tonight about the sales tax as far as the twenty twenty-one snowstorm. Because, you know, that's a little over two million dollars. Last one, give us some options that do include maybe a sales tax on that.
Well, it wouldn't work today.
No, this, this, this is such a small amount of money. We need to use the sales tax for the big one. The elephant in the room paid two million dollars. Okay, more questions? Okay, if we need to turn it over to John. Okay, so a motion to be introduced ordinance by name and number.
Patricia Roberts move to introduce ordinance number one.
Second.
Okay, we'll call this Curry.
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
There we go. The City of Prescott ordinance number one of twenty twenty-three, and the one to end the City of Prescott ordinance number one of twenty fifteen, as previously admitted by ordinance number one of nineteen ninety-two, as previously admitted by ordinance number one of twenty eleven, to establish a fee for garbage and refuse collection services for the citizens of Prescott, Arkansas, and for the purposes. For ads, the City of Prescott, Arkansas adopted ordinance number one of nineteen ninety-two to provide garbage and refuse collection services for its citizens and whereas the city has determined that it is no longer economically feasible to continue such services at ten dollars and fifty cents per month for residential customers to whom such services are provided for which this, which purposes this ordinance is being adopted. Excuse me. It is now therefore ordained by the City Council for the Prescott, the City of Prescott, Arkansas that section one, fee for garbage, rubbish, and refuse collection services. The city hereby adopts the following fee schedule for its services ranging to collecting, for collecting garbage, rubbish, and refuse for its citizens. A, its residential. A fee of fifteen dollars per month will be charged for collection of garbage, rubbish, and refuse for each residential customer. B, commercial and industrial. A fee of twenty-two dollars per month will be charged for the collection of garbage, rubbish, and refuse for all the commercial and industrial customers. Section two, billing procedure. The above fee assessed to the customer by the City for collection services will be collected monthly and billed on the City of Prescott Water and Light segment for said premises and said fee shall be the debt and obligation of the person whose name, the water meter, for said residential unit, condominium, unit of multiple will a commercial establishment or industrial establishment is listed. Section three, definition. For the purpose of this ordinance, the following words and phrases shall have meanings respectively described to and by this section. ADPCE and E are so far from pollution control under college. Last one material. Non-hazardous household, commercial, and industrial solid waste as defined by ADPCE and E in small quantities of conditionally exempt hazardous waste as defined by ADPCE and E. Material. Non-hazardous, bulky, inert, non-nutritable, solid waste that is not degraded, poor degradation very slowly, and is permitted by ADPCE and E to be disposed of in a class four landfill. Class four materials include construction and demolition waste, appliances, furniture, shelves, lamps, and other bulky waste that are not normally collected with household or commercial waste. Collector. A person who under or or written agreement with or without compensation does the work of collecting or transporting solid waste from industry's offices, retail outlets, businesses, institutions, school, or similar location or from residential units or condominiums, provided however that collector shall not include any individual collecting or transporting waste from his own residential unit or condominium. Commercial establishment. Any hotel, motel, apartment house, bringing house, business, or other public or semi-public establishment conducted for the purpose or profit other than a residential unit or condominium business by their end. Condominiums. Individual ownership units in a multifamily structure with a front and back to each unit on the ground level serving as a family residence. Caves in Bay County, Arkansas. Garbage. Food waste, including waste accumulation of animal or vegetable matter used or intended to be used as food or as that intense preparation used cooking, digging, or getting in or storing of eating fish, salad, fruit, or vegetables. Hazardous waste. Like hazardous waste as defined by regulations of the ADPCE and E. Landfill, disposal of solid waste within a controllable area. Homeland complacent and earth cover thereof. Refers to Bay County Solid Waste Management Facility. Industrial customer. Any person engaged in the manufacturing, construction, or assembling of any product or use or consumption by a general public, multiple dwellers. A building designed for or contained three or more dwelling units such as an apartment complex. Owner of rocket. Any person owning, leasing, renting, occupying, or managing any premises within the jurisdiction of the city. Person, the state, or any political subdivision or agency thereof, any municipality, political subdivision, public or private corporation, individual partnership, living liability company, or other business entity, and including any officer or governing or management body of any municipality, political subdivision, public or private corporation, or entity. Nutritable waste. Waste that are capable of being decomposed by microorganisms. Examples of this type of waste include button mugs, kitchen waste, pantry, and corporate processing plant waste from garbage and animal material. Residential unit. Any freestanding structure, any nucleus, or any other shelter set apart that is used for construction or to use as a residence for new families located within corporate limits of the city. Refugees. Garbage, commercial waste, and rubbish. Rubbish, weight paper, garbage, boxes, wood, tree, residential structures, furniture, appliances, metal, and glass property and similar materials. Sanitation superintendent. A person designated by the mayor of the City of Prescott, Arkansas as sanitation superintendent. Section four, special collections. Subject two, availability of personnel and equipment. And when the sanitation superintendent or his designated considers such action being best interest of the city, superintendent may authorize collections by the city of solid waste material, which does not otherwise comply with the standards of this ordinance. When such collection is requested by the owner or. Section five, administration and enforcement. A, the sanitation superintendent shall be responsible for the administration and enforcement of the provisions of this ordinance. The sanitation superintendent may call upon the chief of police of Prescott and the city's coenforcement officer for assistance in enforcement of the provisions of this ordinance. All regulatory actions of the sanitation superintendent shall be subject to review.
All regulatory actions of the sanitation superintendent shall be subject to review and approval by the mayor and city council of Prescott. B, the sanitation superintendent or his designated shall have the authority and duty to make routine inspections of garbage cans, commercial and residential containers and collection area. The sanitation superintendent or his designated upon determining that a canned container or area is becoming or has become unserviceable or unsanitary or is causing or is likely to cause an unsanitary condition, shall issue a notice to the owner or occupant to inform him of the condition existing. The notice shall describe the condition and set forth the date by which the condition must be corrected. If the owner or occupant fails to correct the condition within the prescribed time, it shall be the duty of the sanitation superintendent or his designated to request that a summons from the district court of Prescott or violation of this ordinance be directed to the owner or occupant to whom such notice has been issued. C, the sanitation superintendent or his designated shall have the authority to enforce all the provisions of this ordinance and to request a summons from the district court of Prescott be issued to any violator of any provision hereof to appear in the district court of Prescott to answer such charge. D, in the prosecution of this ordinance, the following presumption shall apply. If the condition resulting from the violation was found on premises owned by the person to whom notice was given, then it shall be presumed that said owner was responsible for said condition. Number two, if the person to whom notice was given fails to remove or otherwise correct said condition without notifying the sanitation superintendent of the reason for his failure to do so within ten days, then it shall be presumed that the said person notified was in fact responsible for said condition not being removed. Number three, if the condition resulting from the violation was found on property where all multiple dwelling units exist and the party actually committed violation cannot with reasonable certainty be determined, then it shall be presumed that the owner and his subject premises upon being given notice is the party responsible for ensuring that the condition is removed from the premises. Number four, if any of the material placed, deposited, discarded, dumped or otherwise caused to be put in violation of the provisions of this ordinance can be identified as having last belonged to, been in possession of, sent to, received by or been the property of any person prior to its being dumped as prohibited therein, then it shall be presumed that such person placed, deposited, discarded, dumped or otherwise caused to be put such matter and material in violation of this ordinance. Number five, the presumptions described above are rebuttable by the person charged and must be rebutted by clear and convincing evidence in order for the person so charged to be exonerated. E, collection services shall be discontinued where garbage or trash cans or commercial container are unadvised or have been condemned as unfit by the sanitary superintendent or his designated. Notice of the same has been given to the owner or occupant of the premises and the owner or occupant has failed or refused to correct the situation within one week of the date of that notice. Section six, preparation and storage of residential refuse or collection. Placement of certain refuse or collection. Prohibited. It shall be the duty of the owner or occupant of a residential unit and condominium to keep all garbage and refuse prepared for pending collection and disposal. The owner or occupant shall use containers adequate to hold the rubbish, garbage and refuse accumulated prior to scheduled pickups. All refuse and garbage should be placed in watertight plastic bags with the tops secured at the curb side of the residence or condominium. Any garbage or refuse placed in appropriate bags for collection which are damaged or destroyed by whatever means and scattered before pickup, the curb side pickup, scattered before pick up, the curb side pickup, before shall be the responsibility of the owner or occupant. The owner or occupant shall be then or otherwise be responsible for the accumulation of garbage or refuse on the property owned or occupied by the or on public thoroughfares and adjoining set owners or occupant's property. Section seven, preparation and storage of commercial and multiple dwelling garbage and refuse for collection. Commercial and multiple dwelling owners and occupants will be responsible for providing commercial containers subject to approval by the city as to their serviceability. All garbage, refuse and rubbish will be free of liquid and placed in watertight paper or plastic bags with the tops secured prior to placing in commercial container. The owner or occupant of the commercial establishment shall inform or notify the city of the location of the containers, which must be approved by the sanitation superintendent or his designated. The user or users of commercial containers shall be responsible for the appearance, maintenance and serviceability of containers procured by them or placed for their use. The owner or occupant of a commercial establishment or the manager of a multiple dwelling service by a commercial container shall be responsible for maintaining areas surrounding such commercial containers clean and free of accumulations of refuse. Section eight, prohibited. Materials from collection. The following materials shall not be collected by the city and shall be required to be disposed of by the owner or other means. A, non-combustible trash. B, liquids. C, hazardous waste. D, discarded building materials. E, dirt or rocks. F, trees, bushes or other vegetation from or generated by commercial tree trimmers, landscapers or building contractors. G, auto tires, junk autos or discarded parts of their front. H, any other material prohibited by the county's permit with the A, C, P, C and E. It also shall also be a violation of this ordinance to place or cause to be placed in any garbage or refuse container for collection, any acid, explosive material and flammable liquids, dangerous or corrosive materials of any kind or any other material which not injure or affect the City of Prescott.
Section nine, provision of the collection without permission from the city. It shall be unlawful and a violation of this ordinance for any person not permitted by the city to collect or haul any refuse, garbage or rubbish other than that arising from its own property and accumulation. Any person desiring to collect, haul or ungarage refuse or rubbish on another person must apply for any edition and permit from the city of Prescott through sanitation superintendent or his designated and pay an annual permit fee to be established on an annual basis by later. Section ten, unlawful deposit. With the exception of depositing filter or suitable material for construction purposes, it shall be unlawful for any person to place, discard, dump or otherwise cause to be placed in garbage, refuse, rubbish, litter, junk, appliances, equipment or other materials anywhere in the city without the express approval of the sanitation superintendent with such approval being obtained in writing by application in hand. Section eleven, disconnection or failure to pay collection fee. Any owner or occupant who does not pay the collection fee within twenty days of being built in the manner set forth under section two of this ordinance shall be provided a ten-day written notice of non-paying. If payment is not made by that owner or occupant within said ten-day period, the city will disconnect said owner or occupant's water service with the city without further notice. In order to reconnect such water service, the owner or occupant will have to pay the past due fee and a reconnect fee of twenty-two dollars initially until the past due fee is paid and water service reconnected, the city will discontinue collection service for garbage and refuse. However, said owner or occupant shall remain responsible for ensuring the owner or occupant of garbage and refuse is transported with the county landfill and the owner or occupant applies with the other provisions of this ordinance. Section twelve, amendments. A violation of any provision of this ordinance shall constitute a misdemeanor and a conviction thereof shall be punishable by a fine of not more than fifty dollars for thirty days of imprisonment in the facility used for municipal prisoners or both certified and imprisoned. Each day of violation of this ordinance shall constitute a separate offense. Section thirteen, general appeal. All ordinances and parts of other ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby appealed. Section fourteen, separability. In the event that any part of section sentence, clause or phrase of this ordinance shall be declared or adjudicated invalid or unconstitutional, such adjudication shall in no manner affect either part of section sentences, clauses or phrases of this ordinance and this ordinance shall remain in full force and effective. Section fifteen, emergency. Thus ordinance being necessary for COVID, health, safety and welfare shall be effective immediately upon its passing. This ordinance is approved by the city council for the City of Prescott, Arkansas on the seventeenth day of January two thousand twenty-three.
Then John, you said the section fifteen, you said the energy, what should that warrant be for?
Now, the motion to suspend rules.
It's a move.
Okay.
Okay, roll call. Curry?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Page? Austin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Page? The City of Prescott ordinance number one of two thousand twenty-three and the ordinance to end the City of Prescott ordinance number one of two thousand fifteen as previously admitted by ordinance number one of nineteen ninety-two, as previously admitted by ordinance number one of two thousand eleven, to establish a fee for garbage and refuse collection services for its citizens of Prescott, Arkansas and for other purposes. Need a motion to pass the ordinance under?
Before we do that, can I, I need, can you explain section eleven a little bit more?
I can say what I'm saying.
I was talking to.
Oh, sorry, okay. Thank you.
Okay, disconnection for paying collection fee. Then you want to talk on that? This is Larry's expert. Section eleven, she's coming out of this convention for failure to pay.
Typically, we don't, we don't ever have anybody pay their trash. And if best of case, then it's just like what we're saying, I mean, you're going to turn off, turn off the water in order to get it paid. But typically, it's, if they don't pay, we won't shut them off anyhow.
Well, that's what I was, because I was like, isn't that incorporated in the bill?
Yes. It's all incorporated in one bill, so it's typically pay the full thing, but it's all considered delinquent with full meters. And that might need to be reworded in here to fix that a little bit. Plus, you're changing your, I won't go say that, but if you're changing your reconnect fee from what we typically do of twenty dollars to twenty-two dollars, that's what you want, it's mine. But yeah, typically, it's all incorporated in one bill. We don't, we don't have anybody to pay their trash.
And we'd be putting something out for the citizens to be aware of this, I mean, it's getting ready to be a fee, like each door.
We're putting it on the bill.
Anybody else have more questions? Need a motion to suspend rules for the search and bond reading, tie on them?
I saw a move.
Who's second? The City of Prescott ordinance number one of two thousand twenty-three and the ordinance to end the City of Prescott ordinance number one of two thousand fifteen, as previously admitted by ordinance number one of nineteen ninety-two, as previously admitted by ordinance number one of two thousand eleven, to establish a fee for garbage and refuse collection services for the citizens of Prescott, Arkansas and for other purposes. Motion to pass the meeting.
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call. Curry?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Page? Austin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
I need a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Roll call. Curry?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Page? Austin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
All right, next. This was, it's always a great pleasure that I get to talk about one of my friends and one of our long-time employees. He's back there with his, can't miss him, he's like sixteen thousand feet tall. Big man off campus. And he was voted on by his fellow employee. He is the two thousand twenty-two Employee of the Year. We call him Leon Pookie Gill. Pookie had been employed with the City of Prescott for thirty-seven years and four months. He gave his life to our city. He started employment on September third, nineteen eighty-five. That was shortly after high school graduation. He's been here a while. He's done all the training, made himself a top flight glider, electric glider, played with them waters, slept in high tank. Got to be a brave man to do that every day and stay focused and concentrated. Pookie has been a vital part of our labor department for a long time. Pookie's work habits are very good. He follows orders, stays busy without having to be told to do so. He's got that older work ethic that you don't see in a lot of younger ones nowadays, according to our experience. Pookie's a great family man. We're very proud of him. Pookie is very deserving of this award. The two thousand twenty-two Employee of the Year. I'm going to have him come up here, we're going to shake hands and give him a good picture. And we always give our Employee of the Year out at a Christmas party, so this is the second time he's got to be recognizable through all this, but he's been enjoying it so far. Come on up, let him get around on the block.
I didn't remember the camera was key up though.
I forgot his on, yeah.
No more to say?
One, two, three.
Thank you, Curry.
Thank you.
Okay, everyone should have a copy of our whole budget, our latest budget that we've come up with. After three months of work. So now we want to discuss and approve the two thousand twenty-three budget. We got Brother Carl and Bruce and Larry and Budget Committee here. Surely somebody can answer all the questions, so we'll start off, let Brother Carl do his thing.
I've been doing it for fifty years, it's been the hardest one that I've gone through. I want to thank the mayor, Bruce, Larry and Budget Committee for their support of this. It's been tough. But we do have a projected surplus of sixty-five thousand dollars. When I first started with this, we had a projected deficit of about four hundred thousand, but we've had
But we've had to do a lot of work, there's some cuts in here. Nobody wanted to have to make the cuts, but it's necessary. We got the cut because we don't want to be trying to hold down this for our citizens. But I'd be glad to answer any questions. We have done this, this is gonna, the Budget Committee's gonna have to monitor this. Department heads are gonna have to stick with it because sixty-five thousand dollars could run out the way that it is being spent. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have. I would like to make one comment that I've been asked to make, it's about the audit. We can't do an audit by the Legislative Joint Audit Committee. They do the counties, but they can only audit turnback money. The street gets turnback money, the general fund does, but the utility gets down, so they would not audit the utility. And you say, well, why do we have an audit? Every bond issue that's sitting on this, on your financial statement requires an independent audit. If you don't have that, you're not gonna get any bond. So then they, uh, I think I've answered that question.
You did.
But the Legislative Joint Audit Committee has required this. This came down from the state in nineteen seventy or seventy-one. We had to separate books at that time. At that time, we were running all up under one, when we first took over the county from the city, we were running all up under one general ledger. And they came in, Legislative Joint Audit Committee came in and said, you've got to change that, because we're not gonna audit the utility audit. In order to get an audit, we've got to have an independent audit. This firm that's auditing us from our advocate, Bruce and I like to have them, because they come in here and don't bother us. When we first took over, we had a separate set of auditors every year. You can't imagine what happens when you get a new set every year, you wind up having to answer more questions, the same question every year. This bunch does it, as far as I can tell, are competent, and they come in here and do their work, they don't harass us too much. And he's already talked to me about getting the audit, I've been, I've been fussing at him, quite honestly, about being so long with the audit. We need the audit in the middle of the year, not in, not in next year. Because if we'd had some corrections that we needed to be made, we've gone one year without making the corrections. But now, when we get that, we get, if we can get the audit earlier, we can do our corrections and get it resolved. Now, having said all that, back up. I'd be glad to answer any questions on, on this proposed budget. There, I don't hear it.
But, you know, K. Hey, Carl.
Hey.
I went to the municipal league conference this past, last week, and this is something that the state legislators are looking at too. They're saying that the cities need to, over a period of time, start increasing your water rates and your trash rates. Because all cities are falling with that deficit. And so they, I think they're gonna have a bill that's gonna come out that's gonna require that the states start, the cities start keeping up with the rates, because the rates are falling behind. So that's putting us at a plus if we keep, we're coming up with our rates. Because most citizens think we are just doing it ourselves, but the state is gonna require this, there's gonna be a bill passed that you do this. So it's not gonna be on us.
But Mayor, I've moved that we accept the proposal budget for twenty twenty-three.
We all ready. We all was ready.
Yes.
It's over.
Yes.
This is gonna happen. Sure.
We have a motion in a second.
A longer second.
Curry.
Yes, sir.
Roberts.
Yes.
Diggs.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Todd.
Yes.
Amy.
Yes.
Diggs.
Yes.
Okay, I just thought of something, and I want to do this. Larry Jones, Blake, Blake wanted to go Blake Rogers with the audit. In one of our great letters, this has been a lot higher than this. I think my best memory was like nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand.
That's right.
But Larry Jones, he come up to the city, how many years ago in here?
About two thousand fifteen.
Two thousand fifteen, we brought Larry up here, we called Larry's a man, man, if you don't pay the bill, he's gonna shut you off, okay? Larry has done such a good job. In the audit final, we read, we know that the following errors in the utility department should be addressed. And it goes on talking about bad debts, and it says, utilities systems account receivable includes accounts totaled three hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and two that were in arrears for a hundred and twenty-one days or more as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Although the city has a cut-off policy, doesn't appear as always a head to, as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, there were no active accounts that were in arrears by a hundred and twenty-one days or more. So Blake said that most of these came from before two thousand fifteen. In the last sentence, as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, there were no active accounts that were in arrears by a hundred and twenty-one days or more. That total I read is three hundred and twenty-five thousand. Before Larry got up here, I will say like Carl, it was nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand that people, you know. Larry has been strict, he's done a great job, guys. So let's give Larry a round of applause. Bruce, can't leave Bruce out. Y'all don't know what all Bruce does. He walked an hour and a day looking for a raise for a person from the old days. We did a little bit of everything. I want y'all to give Bruce a good hand, I don't want to give him. But me and Bruce both very proud of Larry, and keep us out of a lot, he keeps us out of a lot of chewings and cussing, and he takes it like a man. You can ask him about all his health problems and stuff later. It's a stressful job he's got, so at least he got to thank you in the public forum, because he's been deserving that for, well, it's twenty twenty-three, eight years now, so we thank Larry. All right, next, we got good news, hope so, anytime Kyler comes, you know, it's good news. We got five rounding, but you know, right now, it's clear, you know, it's a candidate.
Uh, we, all the council members have a letter on the table there. Bid award recommendation letter, and then a patch on the back of bid tabulation for the bids we received for the East Elm Street, West, West Street, Super, project. I'm gonna read this letter, and then if you have any questions, I'll have to answer. As you're aware, super bids were received in open on December twenty, two thousand twenty-two, with records to the East Elm Street, West Street, super improvements. The success of contract with RBIS for the base bid of three hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars, and that's showing the attached bid tabulation. We have worked with RBIS on numerous occasions, therefore recommend project award to RBIS for the base bid in the amount of three hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars, contingent upon a D W change order in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars to reduce the budget total to two hundred and eighty-two thousand, twenty dollars, with contract execution and construction to begin as soon as possible.
So, how many thousand ways to lower it there?
We hope to lower it by one hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
It's good. Really good.
What do you think, Mr. County?
Everywhere.
We believe the contract time is seventy-five, eighty hours, don't you think? More than a hundred and twenty-three minutes. Yes.
Is anybody interested in this proof there?
We would need you to, uh, motion a second to award the contract as, in the, for recognition RBIS.
So we need a motion a second to award the contract to RBIS.
Reset the contract, say one thousand dollars.
Sir.
So I moved to reset the contract. I was trying to think about the hundred something.
We got a motion in a second. Curry.
Yes, sir.
Roberts.
Yes.
Diggs.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Todd.
Yes.
Amy.
Yes.
Diggs.
Yes.
All right, take a time in this area. Perry's another one with the city that we want to give a good round of applause, couldn't snout for his, fifty-eight thousand years he's been with the city owner. I'd just give Perry a big round of applause. All righty. Okay, now we need to go back to twenty twenty-one again. It's snowing outside, it snowed three or four days, about twenty-one inches. And then Sweptoe did what we think was a little price gouging. So we're gonna let Larry Jones talk about the rest of, or I get carried away.
So they, they sent us a bill for, for what I need. We discussed with legal team, tried to find a way to cut it and get around it, improve it, it was, like you said, price gouging, whatever you want to call it, immoral, but anyway. And so we've been getting interest on it from that point, and so we're gonna end up paying it back to them, is the game plan right now. You're looking at about fifteen, a little over fifteen thousand dollars a month, paying them back. And there's, there's two ways to do this. One is to carry it back to the citizens and recover the money from them. The other one is to fund, get a sales tax to fund it, okay? The sales tax we're looking at would come in and restrict before this bill. Once this bill is paid for, the sales tax can be gone. To give you an example of, of what you're looking at, I did, I did about six different people here in town, I'm not gonna give you their names, but this, this just gives you a cross section of what you're looking at. So one of them is the person who used three hundred and thirty-six kilowatts in that month. There's gonna be two dollars and thirty-one cents for sixty months, if we did the sixty, we decided to go with the seven, so it's gonna be one sixty-five. All right, so what I'm saying is, that person who used three hundred and thirty-six kilowatts in February is gonna have a dollar and sixty-five added to their bill for the next seven years. That don't sound too bad, but when you get up to somebody who used three thousand, two hundred and eight, you're gonna add fifteen dollars and seventy-four cents to their bill. One customer here who used five thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven in that month, you're gonna add twenty-six dollars and ninety-two cents to their bill for the next seven years. These last two are commercial customers. Their total payback will be twenty-nine thou, twenty-nine thousand dollars, three hundred and fifty-one dollars a month. The sales tax is definitely the better way to go as far as the citizens are concerned. But you're gonna have to recoup this money somewhere, or your budget's not gonna fly. So the question today is, you know, what do we want to do? Do we want to look at the sales tax, or do we want to look at, it's gonna take me about forty hours to put these in, that's non-interruption hours, to put these into computers. They cannot do it through tech, I've done contact them, so, you know, we need to get hold of this for two reasons. One, I might have to get it in the computer if we're gonna recover it through the citizens, or if you're gonna do the sales tax, I think all y'all know how that works, you got to do a bunch of, jump through a bunch of hoops. I think get a, a special election call, correct? So there's, there's the thoughts on that, so let's have the questions, because I know I.
Would you, would you emphasize that the sales tax would be sixty percent from the interstate people passing through?
Yeah.
Or, other word, we have help paying it back from people that are doing it.
Most of your, most of that revenue is gonna come from out at the truck stops, from people that pass through here. Now, if you go out there and buy stuff, I mean, you're gonna pay it here, but a lot, sixty to seventy-five percent, I think, is what the estimate's been. That sales tax money comes from the interstate. Anybody else got a question about, I know it's a lot to take in, but it's, we're just about to term, we're gonna pay it back, so the question is, how, is where we're at.
Only lots of things to do with bill sales tax.
Are we going to do a survey from the citizens of Preston? Which my opinion would be the self, having a sales tax.
I, I don't know, but, I mean, if you do a survey, it's more time. My opinion is, the council and the mayor can decide how they want to handle it, I mean, you represent all the people in town, and they trust you doing. I mean, if I lived here, I'd say do the sales tax, because I wouldn't want to pay the money back. So, I mean, that's, that's the simplest way. You have to get it passed, and the way to get that passed is to explain to people that, you know, it's either the sales tax, or you pay it out of your pocket. I mean, that's a simple math right there, so. When this, when this bill's paid for, the sales tax comes off.
Like Brother Carroll was saying, that if we can, let them understand that, like the trucker or anything that comes through, they have to pay sales tax too. And it only, it won't only be on just the citizens in Preston.
That's fair.
So, they probably do a bill for the sales tax, I believe.
I don't know what, what the procedure is for the sales tax, that's above my pay grade, but that's my understanding of what needs to happen, so. Anybody else?
There would be, talented people too, like you.
Yeah, yeah, I'd buy gas after all that.
We want, we want, we'll have a lot of help.
It definitely, it definitely beats putting an added burden on your citizens for something that was out of pocket, you know, unordinary, that doesn't have, or we hope it don't have to be real, or ever again will be great, so. What else? Mary?
Do you know exactly how much the sales tax would be?
Typically, in a year, it's between, between five hundred and seven hundred thousand, it varies.
No, no, what I mean is.
It varies, but if we're out here around six, seven years, yeah.
That we would take in from a one cent sales tax.
I thought it did.
Will there be a tax coming off soon?
I don't know about that.
What, will there be a tax coming off soon?
Mary, she pulled up some information off the internet about where we would be as far as the state's concerned, if we go up another cent. And I looked at it, but I'll be honest with you, I can't remember what it was, if you got a question about that, we had to sit down, we need to look at where it puts us in the state as far as, you know, from nine to ten, or wherever at the state, as far as everybody else's sales tax.
There is, and actually, a lot of cities, we looked at that, and there's actually a lot of cities on Interstate twelve and thirteen cents.
We're kind of behind on that, like a lot of other places, we probably shouldn't have waited for now.
It's a lot of free money, it's definitely easier to have two citizens like you, that's for sure.
Yeah, it is, it is, though. Not only citizen, but in fact, everything.
I, I'd like to say one more thing. Time is of the essence here on this bill, because, you know, your budget's depending on this revenue, so. We will say a little step and drop, it needs to be followed, because it also, our bike bill went down, but the secondary outcome is it went down because of the usual electricity. It's still, it's still on the upper end. The total amount we paid went down, but the cost, the price of it is still up, so we're still, still having a bike that's going there.
Okay, John, if you call the role, and what we want each councilperson to do after we get through a discussion is either say, you both.
is either say you vote for sales tax, or you vote about putting it on the left of the bill.
Perry.
I'm one of my-
Do you want?
You want sales tax? No, sales tax or all the like here?
I'm all for the sales tax. We need the option.
Roberts?
Sales tax.
Neach?
Sales tax.
Austin?
Sales tax.
Williams?
Sales tax.
Todd?
Sales tax.
Amy?
Sales tax.
Neach?
Sales tax.
Sales tax, thank you, Ray. Okay, everybody should have a sheet like this. If you know everything you're wearing, except the times and the dates for the people. Okay, let's start off with the dates. We will have three Tuesday meetings, one up tonight, next month, Monday following holiday, third Monday following holiday. And then in June this year, June tenth will be on nineteenth, so we will come in June on Tuesday. Dear season, we don't have interruption this year, it worked out, Perry. So January, February, June, if you want to stay on the third Monday, we would have three meetings on Tuesday. So do y'all want to stay on the third Monday?
We're true for me, I've been-
I move that we keep the suggested, let's get it.
Second.
Okay. Yeah, we got motion a second to keep the same on the third Monday.
Hurry.
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Neach?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Neach? Okay, now the time, it's six-thirty, well, you're about in my ear, it's six-thirty. You might have got a different idea.
We'll keep the same time, everybody will work there.
Second.
Six-thirty, you want to motion that Perry starts for six, you say? Six-thirty. Hurry.
Yes, sir.
Roberts?
Yes.
Neach?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Neach?
Yes.
All right, thank you, it's six-thirty, third Monday. Anybody need a break? Seven forty-two, we should be out of the truck. Anybody need a break? Okay, I didn't think we'd get to this part till eight-thirty at nine, so y'all got plenty of time. All right. Next, we come to citizens communications, let's fill out a yellow card. And tonight, we have Wesley Ratcliffe and Tiffany Moore, they're with us. So where are you guys for, Wes?
This is a silly thing I have to say before you guys talk about. All right, in regards to City Parks Department, an issue with access to the complex Little League baseball field. This is an email that I wrote to the Attorney General of Arkansas, and I'll read it, and then I'll get into the rest of it. To the office of the Attorney General of the State Parks, this correspondence is regarding a situation with Rock School Superintendent of Prescott School District in Prescott, Arkansas, has banned citizens from utilizing state and city funded public park facilities. This is a partial vendetta by Mr. Poole, which stems from an incident that occurred over a year ago in January two thousand twenty-two, during which he ordered a youth baseball team off of a public facility so that he and his son could use it. This incident occurred on Sunday afternoon, and the presence of the youth team did not interfere with any school district function. Since this incident, he has had multiple times attempted made Facebook declarations informing the public that the park is school property, and that he has sole authority over who has access to the facility. The most recent such declaration came this past weekend via the Prescott Parks Department after he informed the director that permission must be sought before anyone is allowed at the park. He then informed him that, I coach, well, a new sport right here, if I walk those hallways, I coach every one of kids, people, basketball, parks in second grade, little boys all the way to the older kids, football, all of it. And I love doing it, love being around the kids. The organization that I coach in, I coach eleven-year-olds, most of them fifth graders, we got one fourth grader I know of. And then there are two other teams, there's third and twelfth children, and third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade. So, to continue, I told him that I seek a letter clarifying this matter to all parties involved that the park was constructed and is maintained with funds provided by the state of Arkansas and the city of Prescott for the purpose of being a mixed-use facility to be used for both public use and organized Prescott School District functions, and that Mr. Poole does not have the authority to prohibit the public's use of the park when it does not need use for organized district functions. Thank you for your attention regarding this matter, Wes Ratcliffe. So, I come to you today asking if we can get clarification from the attorney with the agreement that they had at the commission, when they were constructing the park. I'm not Clarence Thomas, but my interpretation of it is that if they are having a function, a district function, they have priority of use of that facility, one hundred percent of that. We're talking about a Sunday afternoon in January, we're talking about little kids on a Little League field. We do not use the high school facility, we do not use the softball field. As far as I'm concerned, the city government pays to build and maintain those facilities, but we're not doing anything that would interfere. It is simply a personal vendetta and bullying on behalf of Mr. Poole. So, I say clarification as far as the city's attorney's stance on whether the citizens have access to that public.
Okay, I'm gonna try not to keep you very long. I'm a former employee at Prescott Elementary School, I brought my four children there from Nevada six years ago, I guess. And when we started there, my husband and I also started a travel organization, which now Mr. Ratcliffe coaches one of the teams in our organization. The first year that I worked there, I emailed Mr. Poole and said, you know, can we use the field, which we were talking about, the two high school fields? I was told, yes, you know, just make sure you stay in contact with the coaches. I talked to Mr. Gay, Mormon on line for second, he's a softball coach, and Mr. McCauley. And they would say, you know, yes, we'll be there, no, he won't, it's never a big deal. In fact, I believe a year or two ago, we had some students there that were talking very ugly to one of our mothers that was from another town, Mr. Poole came, asked him to leave, not a big deal. So we used the fields for five, five years or more with no problems, until the event he's talking about last January, when it was actually too wet to really be on the field. We had his ten-year-old team, our fourteen-year-old team there. He had a dad in one cage, we had a dad in another cage. He had some kids in the softball field just in the corner there. I think there might have been some in the Little League field in the corner there, and my husband was on the portable mound outside of the field working on pitching. All of this, you know, like volunteer, I mean, we don't make any money off of this, it's just, you know, to better our kids and other kids that want to play baseball and love baseball. And so whenever Mr. Poole pulled up with his son, I said to another mother, he's gonna, you know, kick them out of the cage, I knew that was what was coming. The two dads in the cages had no idea who he was, they didn't know him, you know, when he walked up, they didn't know that, you know, he probably expected them to get out of the way. You know, had a normal conversation happen where he said, you know, hey, can we use the cage for a little bit? Or something of that nature, I don't think we would, you know, would have had all the domino effects after. It was the, you know, arrogance in expecting that, you know, we get out, and then as they're cleaning up balls, you know, he's making a comment, you can't hog all these, you know, all both of these cages. I was there, I was his employee, he never spoke to me, he never said, hi, how are you doing, anything like that. Talked to my husband, talked to Mr. Ratcliffe, and then the next morning, while I'm sitting at my desk at school doing a reading assessment, he starts emailing me the legal document, all this stuff, for me to tell, can you pass this along to your coaches? So ultimately, that was the start of why I left and took my kids out of this school district. But we still, you know, love this community, we still love baseball, and, you know, from there, you know, there was, let me go back, I'm sorry, I kind of skipped a little, in January, sent me two emails during school hours, wanted to meet with me, you know, I did, it was less compromise, you know, let's figure it out. So at that point, still, let's, you know, figure out how to do this. When I left in May, the very next month in June, posted only Prescott students are allowed on the fields. So there was a parent who lives here, who had already planned a birthday party for her son with his travel team to be on the Little League field, that had to change over here to Livingston, because he told her, yes, you know, only Prescott students are allowed on the field. You know, then now here we are, a year later, and it's, he's wanting to ban, you know, travel teams, so. I mean, I know there's, I'm not gonna point out, but several, you know, people in here that my husband has, you know, coached or whatever at some point or another, so this is, this really has nothing to do with me. My kids are in high school ball, it's just the principle of it, you know, just being able to say, well, this is how it is, and, you know, we don't know if there's really any backing as far as the city, or, you know, we don't know, anyway, we just, we just won't, you know.
I'll give you clarification.
Yes.
All right. Thank y'all. Here's what we have, guys. Okay. There's an interlocal agreement between the school and the complex. Nineteen eighty-eight, were you on the council there, Mr. Ross?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Well, he probably can tell us more than anything. Section three, the way everybody reads it, that I talked to. The complex out there, the high school field and the girls' softball field, they were made, and the school needed somewhere to play, so they got together, they got an interlocal agreement. If I'm wrong, you tell me, do you? Okay. After baseball starts, softball starts in high school, they're practicing now, but their games start late February, early March, okay? If they're playing, the Little League teams and the Little League travel teams are not supposed to be out there, because the high school has the facilities. They have the parking lot, they collect money when you pull up, they have the parking lot, they chase the foul balls, they have the concession stand, win open, all that. So, that's probably ten home games a year. So, that leaves you three-hundred-and-fifty-plus other days of the year where grant money was used, if I'm not wrong, grant money was used to, remember Coach Odom? He was our parks director at the time, and I've coached youth football in the Prescott Parks Department since nineteen seventy-nine. If you remember, Coach Odom used to have the office on the end of the community center, remember the old community center? Well, he had a picture of that complex for two or three years before it was built. It was actually supposed to have been four fields and a swimming pool, Olympic-sized swimming pool to hold swim meets. Well, after they got done it, they needed more money on dirt work, and three fields got built and no Olympic swimming pool. So, your school's supposed to use it for there, and if they're having an event like, like, I don't know what they call it when they get the classes together, like class day, they'll go over there and have games at night for the classes. That's like one or two nights a year, and then they've got their baseball and their softball. Well, now, the school's saying nobody else can get on there like Mr. Ratcliffe said in January, for a weekend practice? Come on now. Let me read section three to you, see if y'all hear it like I do. All right, in this nineteen eighty-eight, it might be time to go over it again as far as interlocal agreement. Maybe get a committee together, it might be something we want to do. Nineteen eighty-eight, number three, use of facilities. Thus, school and city hereby agree that the school shall have exclusive rights and priority for the use of the park and recreational facilities constructed on the above-described property, which is the James Johnson's Park Complex, for all school district functions and extracurricular activities, to include but not limited to baseball games and tournaments, softball games, swim meets, see? My memory is pretty good. And any and all other school functions and extracurricular activities involving or sponsored by the school. The city, through the commission, shall have sole responsibility for the supervision of the use of the facilities by the public. And the school shall not have any responsibility to the public for the use of any of these facilities, except any responsibility which may be imposed by law when the school is using the facilities for school functions. That's pretty simple to me, but if anybody else heard something different, please let us know.
But let me clarify something, how tricky it is, when you ask me about being on the city council in nineteen eighty-eight. I don't think I was, I just remember that couple, you do this nine and seven.
That'd take thirty-four years.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I don't think I was on there, I know it was when they made this. But, this is a very difficult situation to deal with, and what puts us as a city council, let's, sometimes I don't think the general public realize what the council have involved in this. The Park and Park Commission is the one that is kind of responsible for the running of the city parks. Am I correct, councilmen, those that are aware? We finance, I want you all to know, we finance the, the, the playground parks and all that, but we don't do that, do fine things on, on dealing with that. And this is putting us in a situation that we, I think it should come through the Park Commission.
That's a good point, because nineteen eighty-eight, there wasn't a Parks Commission.
Right, right, so that's what I'm saying.
Back when we played in seventies, eighties, there was a baseball commission.
Right.
Because Mr. Nasher headed it up a long time. My daddy was on several others.
But there's a paragraph there, that says when it's not in use.
That it's open.
It operates under.
The board.
Park director. Under umbrella of the commission. Nobody called them park commission or work commission.
Yeah. I'm in this conversation, but I have very information about this conversation, so I want you to know. Well, I know, he has proposed that none of the travel teams get to use it, and he is going to the Parks Commission and influencing there, the way they're outlining the rules. The city pays the Park Commission, therefore, they don't directly work, you know, on the citizens in the way they do, because we finance their work. We don't set their rules, but the school doesn't set their rules either, I mean, so it's really not a fair contest here, I don't want to put it, I mean, he's making the rules and laying them out to the park director, you know, what he wants, and the park director, I don't know if he don't know, or if he thinks that's the best way, but you've got a big conflict of interest here, and that's where I saw it, but, I mean, legally, whatever the percentage of that agreement is, is all that matters.
Wait a minute, read that.
Okay, read it.
Read it a lot, bro.
Yeah.
Read that.
Right when it starts, on the first page, Interlocal Cooperation Agreement for Joint Use of School Land. This agreement is made and entered into by, in between the city of Prescott, Arkansas, hereafter called the city, and the Prescott School District, number fourteen, here, and after, called the school. Restrict to the terms and provisions of the Interlocal Cooperation Act, being Act Four-Thirt of nineteen sixty-seven, subject to the following terms and conditions. Whereas the city- Whereas the city and the school have jointly applied for grant money for the purpose of developing lands owned by the school located south of the Prescott High School football field, which development will include the construction of baseball fields, concession stands, background facilities, playground areas, swimming pools, with a S, picnic areas, and other recreational facilities to be under the supervision of the Prescott Parks and Recreation Commission. Yeah, then it goes into it, whereas as a condition this agreement by the school to enter into the joint use of its property, the school has required a formal agreement being entered into specifying obligation responsibilities for use of facilities, and this agreement is being executed for that purpose.
I'll be in touch to find out if there's a committee in our complex, please.
Yeah.
Is there a committee?
Yeah, they have a parks and the rent commission. Sorry, you remember all of them? She used to be on them, but she's not.
I'll be in touch with Mr. Van Hook.
Coming down, what you read, you were saying, you made emphasis on taxpayer money being spent on property. That was inaccessible to exist. Taxpayer money for, we have control of the operation of the facility.
That was ultimately my, my concern, is if it's part of our city's budget that was just passed today, that money goes to the parks department. Year mark four, that multi-use facility, it is maintained just like the legal document says by the parks department, it's their role to do these things. I mean, if, if it's money year mark for something, that's pretty legally bound on who gets to say what.
And can I say something, too, like about your, talking about your taxes, you know, you get to do this sales tax. When we, when we bring these kids in, yeah, a lot, a lot of them are from other towns. We have, we have Prescott kids, but we have kids, we have kids from El Dorado, Camden, Nashville, Arkadelphia. When they come here, they're spending their money here. They're shopping and buying cigarettes, they're going to Sonic, they're getting gas. Almost every time when we left practice, we would eat across the Carlos or Pizza Hut or somewhere. I mean, so, you know, I just, I would love if he could just tell us one negative thing that, you know, and this is not hurting anybody, it's just, it is a, it's a vindictive thing against the two of us. It's nothing to these kids, you know.
Little league field, we're not, you know, I'm not discussing, we are in the process of leveling off probably six or so acres outside of town. We diss, we till, we spend thousands of dollars prepping a level place for kids to go practice. Number one, because we don't want to interfere when season starts and when there are more teams practicing and you have facilities for. So we're, we're trying to do that as, as convenient as possible. I do know, like I'm saying, why there would be an issue with using a little league field. When I got there, not just past there, but the Saturday before, prior to this being issued, the storms had blew over a trash can in the third base dugout and had scattered trash all over the field. That's the first thing we got up there, we got the ball in that trash, we put it back in that trash can, stood there, cleaned it up. I'm the last person to leave every single time I'm there, and I walk not only the field, but outside of the field to make sure that no one has left anything. We leave it better than we found it. We pick up trash that other people have, that's where, and that's where we have to draw. No one has done anything to anyone other than practicing baseball with third, fourth, and fifth grade children. That's it. And again, probably at least half of them are citizens of this city.
Do you mind anything else?
Have y'all talked to Mr. Poole since then?
Well, he attempted to contact me this morning while I was at work. He did, he attempted to do so like 14, I would say like that. Not, not as an adult man up here that's had a conversation about this. There's no conversation that he had as to why he wouldn't want to ban children from a little league baseball field. I'll, I'll sit anywhere in public forum and have that conversation with you, if he could give you a good reason. There's, there's no reason for him to worry about school liability, any type of litigation, anyone doing anything inappropriate on the facility. I don't know if you've been to that park or not lately, somebody does $800 a week out there at that place. You can't drive across it without being front and line on the truck. There's plenty of other issues going on over there to not worry about little kids on a Saturday afternoon practicing baseball, third graders, fourth graders.
I, I kind of wish both you all could kind of resolve this, because I, I'm gonna put it like this, I don't see, and I, I'm, I'm sure if he looked at himself, I don't see how he'd have banned you not using the facility that you say is a park facility, you think of saying. I, I, I just think you all need to sit down together. And then with park director, and that, that's the way I feel about it. You and Mr. Poole, park director.
I, I had to contact an attorney's office today out of my pocket.
Because I, I look at it like this, that park director to me would be the one that if he had an issue, he could take it back.
And we're constantly in, in contact, I was in contact with Coach Crowe, y'all were in contact with Coach Crowe when he was the director, and now that Mr. Van Hook is the director, in constant contact to make sure, because I don't know if they, I had PSE or something like that.
Right, yeah, that's, that's the way I, I'm looking at it, you know. We're definitely at some plan, yes, you know you couldn't do it.
At minimum, a week in advance, I try to contact Mr. Van Hook and see, is it okay if we use the complex, the little league field at 2:00 on Saturday afternoon? Again, in January it's not an issue, later into the season, I, I definitely see that could be an issue, but we're not talking about March and April. And again, we're very accommodating when I'm trying to help go in on it. And again, I coached these teams. I'll be over here at city park coaching little footballers, I have a ton of my love of it.
But we, I mean, this has been going on for a year. For a year, he has sent us that document, this is what, and what it says, you're wrong, I have all the power, I can do this, you know. And my point in even coming was just to say, you know, we had no problems for five years at all, no problem at all with us using it. He was okay, he, you know, not, not a problem. And then, you know, when he didn't, when he wasn't able to march in with his son and us bow down, and, you know, then it was, then it was a problem. I guess, it's a, it's, he's mad at us, it's not.
And he was allowed to march in with his son. There was a young man in batting, when he walked into that batting cage and said, we're gonna use this cage right quick. And the dad didn't know him from out, didn't know who he was. And I didn't know he was there, because I'm working with the kid outside of the cage, no ball, just sort of key working on his mechanics. And so I go over and I pick up balls, and before I had a chance to say anything, he says, whoa, you can't be hogging, y'all can't be hogging all of these facilities. And I say, it's a Sunday afternoon in January, I thought this was above the park, and he screamed at me, you want to bet? And started yelling at me, to which I informed him, I don't work for this school, you are not going to speak with me, I'm not just a ward, we're peers, you can address me as a peer.
In front of about 20 parents. There, I don't think that, I mean, I'm, 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 I mean, I'm with you, but I, there's not gonna be, there can't be a conversation there, we're too far into.
He, I, I'm willing to do it though. I'll sit right across from him just like we're having a conversation, and we'll, I mean, it's, it's a discussion on a little league baseball. I ain't there to keep y'all from your suffering.
Yeah.
That's, yeah.
I, 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 I rather, with y'all doing, I rather you come here and share this with us, because we, we want our park, our city to be part of it, we don't, we don't want them to make it. If it's got made, if we want, try to seek him to do, to, to support it.
I can add just saying, I know with experience, the travel team, the Outlaws, they represent the Bay County real well. They've had a grandson, Little Rocket, plays travel ball, and they've played each other several times on some.
On some, sir.
But they represent real well, they're one of the good teams when they show up. They're, they're respectful and our school office. And so they, they do represent well, I mean, they're, they're good bunch of kids.
Now you go up there, so they're Prescott Outlaws.
That's why I say, we should, you all sit down, persuade the school and y'all, because I, I, I don't know, you know, I don't know like whether they're also with them, but I can tell y'all are not a parent. Well, you put us in a position, like I said, we, we, we're not over the bar. It's, it's crazy situation, and I've always asked about, why can't we control it, because we can earn money? But the law says the park commission is the one that is, is, is controlling it.
We have a new park, brother, this, the law of the law. The agreement is, it's written in the back of my, and, and you have a new park.
Yes, sir.
You know, it's not good for anybody to have law even laws, you know, something, not being able to say it's not good for the school, it's not good for the park.
You would think people would have other things to be doing.
I would, I would talk to the park director.
I was there this morning at 07:00.
And that, that's what got this whole thing kind of cleared back up is because Mr. Van, Van Hook was basically, he, he stated to one of our other coaches that Robert has different rules for the complex than what he has himself for these other fields. And that, that's not, you know.
There's a disconnect, I think he was in control of that, but I agree, we'll go to the boxes.
That's a good time to get ours out.
Maybe if you get it lined up, I would feel good if you just could come back and let us know how you're coming out.
We'll do it.
Yeah, and that, because like I said, I like, I like the thing to run, especially our city, I want it to run smooth, everything.
Thanks for y'all's time, appreciate it. Okay, next we'll go to the announcements. Well, I've got three announcements. Okay. These are all good news. The Leadership 23, 2023 class had an excellent opening retreat. This year, we had to go to another place because the other place was getting remodeled. So we went to Oakbauer Manor, Lake Degrade. Excellent facility. I would personally like to thank Mary Godwin, Jason Davis, Judy Duke, Tara Carlton, and Julie Oliver for their hard work in making this retreat such a success. Angel is on, on the leadership, Carlos Van Hook, Carlos absent tonight. Uh, there's my man Casey, he's on the leadership crew. All right, 2023 leadership got off to a good start, and it's an excellent class, they all got along good together, and they're very, very smart. Because I did the pop quiz on Prescott, the Bay County, that Perry used to do when he was the president of the leadership, and it's a very, very smart class. All right, next, if you've been out toward Loves today, Love officially started work on their second Prescott, Arkansas location today, with an estimated project completion date of August the 16th, which we hope they get through then while they can get that sales tax coming in, because we include some loves in the last few months on our budget. This new Loves will employ 50 to 70 new jobs. The overall site plan includes plenty of new parking. Loves representatives and contractors met with Bruce Bean, myself, and Esses Jordan on January the 11th to discuss the plans for this location. It's gonna be really nice, and we're definitely impressed with the Loves family. Loves knows how to run a store, they know how to build a store. They said, hey, y'all guess how many stores we got? Well, we're guessing 75 to 120. Loves has 609 stores. They know what they're doing. They should be, if the weather allows, they should be on schedule, because they have a schedule for every day what they're gonna complete. And it's good much, do you have that same thing on Loves, Chris?
No, I didn't.
Good. All right, so Loves, it's gonna be two Loves, the other one's not close, but it's gonna be two.
Love one and love two.
Love one and love two. Lot of love in the air. Okay, our third, our third, I'd like to give a shout out tonight. During the Christmas party blast, seven, eight degree temperature outside, a lot of people, a lot of businesses have cracks and leaks in their water pipes. Perry could tell you that, Perry did an extra job for Prescott. But tonight, I'm giving a shout out to my co-mayor in Roston, Arkansas, Samuel Quarles. He helped out many residents of this area by turning off water valves and doing other jobs he didn't have to. He helped lots of citizens. I know one of those called him at 11 o'clock, was that Christmas Eve or Christmas night?
Christmas night.
Christmas night. And he went and turned their water off and said he'd been doing it all day, and then he had to come back the next day on that property too. So he had people there Christmas Eve and Christmas Day taking time away from his own family. So that, to the community of Roston, the mayor of Prescott would like to take his hat off and be thankful for the effort that Mayor of Roston, Samuel Quarles showed his citizens during the cold weather. Right, has anybody got anything else?
I like that. I'd like to mention something, I know you probably haven't been looking, but how are we coming on, city attorney?
We have three, three resumes in right now.
Good.
Three resumes.
How many are in the city?
One in the city, two in the area.
Because I'm thinking that, you know, if we do the sales test, we're gonna have to have some kind of attorney to draw up the paperwork for that.
And you have to roll it out right, you have to let people understand that sales tax only happens, not purpose. We're getting help with this, on life, situation.
Zach. All right, anybody got anything else? Okay, we got four of y'all, so somebody needs to make a motion to adjourn.
I know, I believe I can.